I take minutes for.
I'm going to call this meeting to order. This is the regularly scheduled meeting of the Arundel Planning Board. Today is August 3rd, 2021. It is now 7:04 PM. We are in the Arundel Municipal Building in the meeting room. We have on the agenda tonight, we have the approval of the minutes. We have approval of the agenda. We have the approval of the minutes for July 20th, 2021. We have a time for public comments. We have a public hearing. Conditional use permit amendment for specially designed stables. We then have a pending application for the conditional use permit amendment for specially designed stables. We have two, we have a new app, we have two new applications before us tonight. The first of which is Oak Ridge Terrace 2 subdivision preliminary plan. And item number two is a conditional use permit for the Holy Donut, map 36 lot 17. After that, we will have some discussion with the town planners report. And there will be other business that gets discussed. Oh, thank you. I didn't see him come in. So I need a motion to approve the agenda. Any discussion, any changes that you see? Hearing none. All those in favor? It is unanimous. We will move on to the approval of the minutes of July 20th, 2021. Which as you remember, we said, see the video for the minutes.
Right, approve as reported. I know that we approve them as reported.
Motion has been made and seconded to accept the recording for the minutes. Any discussion, comments? Hearing none. All those in favor? It is unanimous. First item, public hearing, conditional use permit amendment specially designed stables. To amend the conditional use permit to include the addition of a 14,400 square foot indoor riding arena. Amanda Butet is the owner and applicant. Tom Cludier is the applicant's agent. And Jason Vafiades of Atlantic Resource Consultants is the project engineer. And Jason is not here. But that's okay. Everybody else is. Does anybody from the public have comments or questions for Mr. Cludier? Yes, sir. Please stand, stand and state your name.
Yes.
Excuse me just for a second. Could, yeah, could you come up here and speak into the mic? We're not going to be able to record it.
Yes, and we have an abutting property. Their entry driveway runs down the length of my property. I have some questions about hours of operation. Night events, weekends, traffic on the road. And that's pretty much big. That and lighting and animal waste.
Mr. Cludier, would you care to address that? Yes, please.
All valid, valid attacks. As the members, most of the members know that we spoke about. Two weeks ago, there's going to be no significant change to what we're doing. Just it'll be over. Hours of operation, we don't let anybody, aside ourselves onto our property.
We have garbage trucks coming by at five o'clock in the morning, in and out. I just.
I can't control when the trash comes to get to my.
Actually, you can. Tell them that they come before seven o'clock in the morning. Yeah. So hours of operation are going to be what? Nine to serve. And that's posted or online or somewhere where it actually states it? And nights, weekends? So you're not open on Sunday?
We're never looking to the public regardless. It's always by appointment only. So typically, no, there's no sign on the road for that reason. We don't want extra traffic. Somebody's coming down that road. We should know.
All right. The it's not so much on you guys as it is on the town. The rogue traffic impact on the road with horse trailers.
That will have to wait until after the public hearing. This is the time for the public to address the applicant. The board is not involved in it.
Okay, all right. Animal waste. You guys have a pad or something that it's being stored on for?
Yeah, we have. To get our initial approval for the conditional use.
And this is the only building that's going up, not just this one structure?
So it's just this, and that's overstated square footage, but it's going to be literally a full barn, no interior walls, no additional stalls, human occupancy, no additional storage. It's literally.
A true, true riding arena, not, not, not additional. And any additional lighting are going up, you know, streetlights or anything going up there? Just out of curiosity. I've got, I've got that off. I got copies of it. And then I guess I'm all set. Yeah, thanks.
Yeah, I mean, the only thing I'd add. Oh, that's, that's. I encourage you and every neighbor we have to come right down and see us if there's ever, ever an issue with anything.
At the meeting, my biggest issue is the traffic. It's just horse trailer being out on the walk. They never go that way.
So again, we don't, we don't, this amendment, if you will, is we don't intend on doing anything out of what's our, you know, approved under our conditional use permit for commercial question center. We don't even nearly do, you know, as much as that, right? We have a few, a few days a year that we might have a horse trailer coming and going. I would hope in the long term, a little bit more of that. But for the most part, our horse is basically empty. He just, it's just us two. We do have, so for her to go to her show and take horses and be the same there, it's just, we don't have a lot of people coming. I don't think, like I indicated that in the application. No impact, but it's changed what's already.
Jason Nettle, I'm also in the butter. Is there a map or anything that's available to show the placement of the building on the property? Is that possible?
Well, I have one. This is the existing building. It's just.
I didn't see it online, but that's what I asked for. Is there any way we could stand that and get that in online?
Well, so I brought this for.
We should, we should be able to. I thought you had brought something in. Other than, other than the small drawing, I thought we had a larger drawing.
Would you all, yeah, you all make it part of the application.
Yeah, I didn't see it online.
We'll make sure, we'll make sure Anne gets that done tomorrow morning.
And then the only other question I had was, I know you guys mentioned, I love the facility. My nieces go there. I love taking my nieces down and watching the horses and stuff. Has there any, been any discussion as far as like competitions or events or anything in the building? Nothing, it's just the horses that are on site or that's it?
Well, yeah, so I mean, unrelated commercials, under the existing items that we have approved for, we can host like single day events. It's never going to be. We have no intention, we live there, right? Yeah, it's a commercial property, but we don't, we have no intention of wanting to have dozens of horse trailers coming in and being on our property. The liability, the work, the. We hope to not do any of that.
To the chair. The internet was just slow going through. It's under Planning Board Agenda Submissions and it is, the whole package is in there, including all the pictures and the maps and such. It's already there. So if you wanted to look it up, it's under the submission. Under SDS Phase 2 C2 Permit 2001 Rev 2 PDA.
Does anybody from the public have any other questions? Hearing none, I will close the public hearing. What time I'm closing the public hearing? I can't get this back after the phone.
I can't hear you. I can't hear you.
No, I'm sorry. I'll close the public hearing at 7:16 and move into pending applications. This is the conditional use permit amendment specially designed stables. To amend the conditional use permit to include the addition of a 14,400 square foot indoor riding arena. Amanda Butet is the owner and applicant. Tom Cludier is the applicant's agent. And Jason Vafiades of Atlantic Resource Consultants is the project engineer. Could you address the traffic issue? That that was brought up by, by your neighbor.
Yeah, I mean, I think that's a logical question based on what is being proposed, right? Are we, are we going out, you know, seriously deviating from what we're already doing? If my best answer is no. While I think we have, you know, under the land use ordinance, we can host single day events. But typically, you know, they're local, Arundel, kind of above Saco, you know, a couple of people maybe at the most, a couple of times a year. And that's really all we can manage for the foreseeable future. I don't, I don't imagine the traffic pattern or any other impacts of the municipality like changing.
Yes, Tom.
Right back to doing some of that already?
Yeah. Yeah, so right now we have a fenced in outdoor, right? But like even in July, if it's oppressively hot and, you know, 100 degrees, we don't ride our horses when it's that hot, right? So like if we, even if it was only, you know, a dozen or so riders, most of which are probably using our animals on our property. No trailers coming in or whatnot, we can't host that event. It's, you know, that hot or whatever. If it's pouring rain, the only difference is the roof over our heads. We might be able to not cancel something like that.
So what?
Yeah. Yeah.
Board have any other questions for the applicant? Well.
The only option in the items from our, our meeting two weeks ago was, was just getting another letter from the fire chief. Which I did, I think he sent it along. And we got the, obviously we got labels printed out and sent to all the property of others.
BJ, do we need a, a large set of plans to sign?
Uh, no, it's not being recorded in the registry. So even if you sign a plan on 11 by 17, it'd be sufficient to put right in the project file that will be in town hall.
Okay.
So I did bring a few copies of that. I didn't know, I think we only need one for all of you to sign or two.
Yeah, we, we, we need one for all of us to sign. And then you might want one for your records.
Right, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Do you have a signature block on one of those?
Yeah, I mean, it's literally the same plan that everybody signed in 2018 and we just signed it.
Well, no, we, we need to have a specific signature block. With room for.
This is not the, so this is the original plan that I think you and a few other members.
Which you'll sign as well. And, and you'll also be signing your notice of decision finding the fact once you approve that as well, so.
Okay. Given, given, nobody has any other questions. This is the Town of Arundel, Arundel Planning Board, findings of fact and approval for conditional use permit dated August 3rd, 2021 for specially designed stables incorporated. Whereas on June 9th, 2021, the Arundel Planning Board received amended conditional use applications from specially designed stables LLC to construct an 80 by 180 foot indoor riding facility in conformance with land use ordinance section 9, 3, 19, 2 on 43 acres of land tax map, 21 lot 1, located at 30 Equestrian Way in the R4 district. Whereas on September 9th, 2019, the Arundel Planning Board conducted a public sidewalk of the project. The planning board instructed the applicant to add several minor amendments to the site map. Whereas on September. Why am I confused? I'm not going backward. I was reading it the way it was written. It's.
That's the way, yes, because I only added the bottom line there. So that's what you had, that's what was done on the previous.
Okay.
Process.
I just seemed I was reading dates that were like way too, way too old.
Yep, I can fix that. I will, I will fix that.
So on, on September 19th, 2019, the planning board determined the application complete and scheduled a public hearing on October 19th, 2019. Whereas on October 10th, 2019, the planning board conducted a public hearing in compliance with land use ordinance section 10, 6, 3, 3. Whereas the planning board held an initial hearing on July 20th, 2021 to review the proposed amendment for the indoor riding facility. Whereas the planning board held a public hearing on August 3rd, 2021 to review the, the proposed amendment for the indoor riding facility. And whereas the Arundel Planning Board has determined the following findings of fact and notice of decision. Findings of fact, number one, the owners of the property are specially designed stables LLC is the owner. The applicant is Amanda Butet. Number two, the property is located at 30 Equestrian Way, tax map 21 lot 1 in the R4 district. Number three, the property is 43 acres in size. Number four, the property currently contains a large private stable, indoor riding ring at a residence, as well as a large outdoor riding ring, six plus paddocks and over 17 acres of cleared pasture. A manure pit is currently located on the north central portion of the property with the Ofo periodically exported offsite to compost operations. Number five, the applicant proposes to construct the 80 by 180 foot indoor riding facility adjacent to the rear of the main stable. Number six, with 43 acres of land and 15 plus acres of pasture area, the applicant meets the minimum area and equine density for 30 equines as specified in land use ordinance section 9, 3, 19, 2A and B. Number seven, the addition of this structure is located more than 100 feet away from neighboring residential structures in accordance with land use ordinance section 9, 3, 19, 3A. Number eight, the facility is well buffered from adjacent residential properties and therefore is in compliance with the land use ordinance section 9, 3, 19, 3D. You're right. Yes, I believe that's correct. Conformance with conditional use criteria. Remember, we have to vote on every one of these. Not a problem. Conformance with conditional use criteria. After due review and consideration, the Arundel Planning Board has determined the application to be in conformance with the criteria of section 929 of the Arundel Land Use Ordinance as follows. 9291, that the use is compatible with and similar to the general categories of uses of neighboring properties. The equestrian center is compatible with the scale and agrarian uses in the Thompson Road neighborhood.
I'll move that we approve.
Is there, is there a second?
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded to approve 9291. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor? It is unanimous. 9292, the use is consistent with the comprehensive plan and the anticipated future development of the neighborhood in that the 2016 comprehensive plan encourages the creation of equestrian centers in the rural conservation district and hence listed as conditional use permitted in the R4 zone.
So moved.
Motion's been made and seconded for 9292. Any discussion? Hearing none. Those in favor? Any opposed? It is unanimous. 9293, that there is adequate and safe pedestrian and vehicular access to and into the site to accommodate anticipated traffic to and from the use. The proposed use will not generate any significant trip generation except during periodic special events. Both the facility driveway and servicing equestrian way are designed to accommodate trucks and horse trailers that will be frequenting the applicant's facility. The Public Works Department has already approved the intersection design of Equestrian Way and Thompson Road.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none. Those in favor? It is unanimous. 9294, that there is adequate water supply and sewage disposal available to service the use. The proposed use already has adequate water supply and septic systems and has adequate capacity and a maintenance plan for the collection and disposal of manure waste generated onsite. There's no need for sewer service. Motion's been made and seconded for 9294. Any discussion?
Yes, I, I do have a question following up on the question about the, the disposal company coming in early. I think it would be good to have it within your operational.
Again, I encourage all of our neighbors. We don't have, we don't have, yeah, we don't have a like commercial sized dumpster. It's a four yard little dumpster like a lot of residences in, in Arundel have. So I'll just call them and let them know that.
Is it put in the dumpster or is it just, you have a?
Well, this is for residents, this is for trash.
Oh, I thought it was. So it would be the same for any, any residents at town? Okay.
Now, is it associated with your commercial enterprise or more with your house or sort of a mix of both?
Yeah, it's mostly, it's our household trash.
You should be able to call them. Is it Casella?
It's Trion, yeah.
You should be able to call and say, please come between.
Yeah.
Throw the planning board under the bus. Everybody else does.
Yeah. All right.
Okay, any, any discussion? Hearing none. Those in favor? It is unanimous. 9295, that there will be no noise, dust, odor, vibration or smoke generated by the use that will adversely affect neighboring properties in that noise, dust and smoke, the nature of the equestrian center does not generate any undue noise, dust or smoke or any other nuisance. The glare, the use will not produce any glare sources for the neighborhood or adjacent properties. Motion's been made and seconded for 9295. Any discussion? Hearing none. Those in favor? It is unanimous. 9296, that the physical characteristics of the site, including location, slopes, soils, drainage and vegetative cover are suitable for the proposed use. This new structure is located in a way that will not add any additional impacts to the environment noted above.
Proven, second.
Motion's been made and seconded for 9296. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. Those in favor? It is unanimous. 9297, that the use will not constitute a public or private nuisance. No additional nuisances will be generated by the proposed use.
Move to, I'll move to approve.
Motion's been made and seconded for 9297. Any discussion? All those in favor? It is unanimous. 9298, that all other requirements and applicable provisions of this ordinance, particularly any pertinent performance standards are met. The applicant has met all pertinent portions of the Arundel Land Use Ordinance and the Street Design and Construction Ordinance in the design of the proposed activity.
Well, second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor? It is unanimous. Therefore, be it resolved that based on the above findings and conclusions, the Arundel Planning Board hereby approves the amended conditional use application of specially designed stables LLC to establish an indoor riding facility, no larger than 80 by 180 feet on the 43 acres of land tax map, 21 lot 1, located at 30 Equestrian Way in the R4 district, subject to the following conditions. Any amendments to the site plan or this approval shall be subject to Planning Board or Staff Review Committee approvals. Number two, temporary portable toilets must be deployed at equestrian event servicing populations beyond the capacity of the septic system. So approved by the Arundel Planning Board this third day of August, 2021. Need a motion to accept and approve.
Move to approve.
Motion has been made and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none. Those in favor? It is unanimous. Congratulations. If you can get us that plan so that we can sign it, we're going to have to get you a copy of this because there was a correction that was made to the findings of fact.
Yes. Yes. Makes its way down to us so that we can sign it.
Okay, next up. New applications. Oak Ridge Terrace 2 subdivision preliminary plan. A proposal to construct a 560 linear foot cul-de-sac road through Phase 2 with six new house lots. The property to be developed is MAP 17 Lot 15A in the R2 District. The respective owners are Oak Ridge Terrace LLC and Walter O. Woods and Anthony. Oh, Anthony, I will butcher your name, but you're not here. I wouldn't do much better with that name than I did with Jason.
Pansy Oko.
Pansy Oko. What he said. To the chair.
Yes, I need to recuse myself as I am in a butter to the applicant.
Okay.
To the chair, I'm also in a butter to the
Thank you very much, Susan. So Walter, tell us what you're going to do.
I can tell that somebody should. I got this. Hi, my name is Walter Woods. Thank you for hearing this application this evening. We're proposing a six lot Phase 2 subdivision, which is obviously the, you know, the second section of Oak Ridge Terrace LLC, which was originally 14 lots. We have one lot that is connecting to Laura Lane. And then the other five lots will be coming off of the new road that we'll be constructing, which is going to be called Old Thompson Trail. And we've submitted to DEP and set all our applications and moved forward in that direction. And we have all our stormwater pretty well taken care of and in place, as you can see in the plan. We are looking for a lot line adjustment on Dolly and Jerry Court's property. Being that we missed that on the last approval. We agreed to give them 2.1 acres of land and then we only gave them a little over two acres. So Dolly and Jerry asked us if we would be willing to do that so that we we have that in the plan as well to show that lot line adjustment as well. So that can, we can take care of that discussion that we had on Phase 1. Which is, was Charlie's pointing out right now, that little section right there. So I, I Yeah. Yeah, they just wanted enough to make sure that if they ever sold, that there wouldn't be issue with the lot size. That was something we missed on Phase 1. Again, we do intend on building Old Thompson Trail as a, as a town road to be voted on and accepted hopefully by this town. To give you an update on Phase 1, we'll be looking to pave out Laura Lane and Oak Ridge Terrace Main Road scheduled with Dayton in October. I've also had discussion with Roger because Laura Lane actually has a little bit of some, some scalloping, if you want to call it. So they are going to shim that, take care of that to obviously meet Roger's, you know, concerns and making sure that the road is built the way the town expects it to do. If this, if and when it goes to town vote the following year.
We had an understanding when Phase 1 was done that this road was never coming to town meeting. It's not wide enough. It does not fit the road standards.
Yes, yes, it does.
No, it doesn't. It's 21 and a half feet wide. It needs to be 24 feet according to the ordinance.
No, that's only if we go over, that's only if we, all Rich, that's only if we went over the, that's why we're down to six lots because we have kept within the ordinance under the 25 lot prerequisite. And that's one reason why we've gone to the six lots because we, we had to include Laura Lane's homes as part of this submission in reference to how many homes are on this property.
The 25 lots that, that we discussed required a second means of egress. And, and that would have cost, that was like 2,500 feet worth of road that you would have had to build up. But we mentioned at that point that the road needed to be 24 feet wide to qualify for town approval.
Again, Richard, I'm not, I'm not going to argue that point. We can, we can discuss that further with the engineer. But I'm under the impression that this road is, and so was in Roger, under the impression this road is and was built to town standards. And that's why we had an engineering firm, which is a third party that the town has, has basically hired that we've paid for to make sure this was built to town standards and specifications. So I can get a letter from Roger in reference to that in our, in our next submission, but this is definitely we have moved forward and I've disclosed to all my customers and the folks that we've sold to, along with the folks on Laura Lane, that this would be a town road at the end of the day. And that is the other reason why I purchased the rights, title, and interest of Laura Lane, along with a 10-foot wide strip of land that went from the Court's property to the Turgeon's property because I had to have the capability and the ownership of that to be able to bring it to town, to town vote. So that was another reason why I purchased that from Jane Franklin to just make sure that we had that capability. So again, you know, we can, this is definitely, we were definitely bringing our Phase 1 and Phase 2 to town standards and to town acceptance pending, obviously, the town voting it yes or no. And it does meet the letter of the law based on the criteria under the 25 acre, under the 25 lots, based on the ordinance, Richard.
As I said, the 25 lots that you originally wanted to put in would have required you to put in a second means of egress from the facility. And you, you originally tried to go out through to I can't think of the name of the other subdivision down. It comes out on to Liberty Acres.
Yeah, Hissong's Development. We were looking to make a connection there and/or from Liberty Acres Lane was another opportunity, another connection we had. But the discussion was is the ordinance, not the discussion, the ordinance says that if I'm over 25 lots, I have to have a second means of egress in 24-foot wide, wide roads. That's what the ordinance says in reference to the road standards.
Because it's a collector road.
That's correct. And that's, and that's another reason why we came back to the board. When we first came and talked with you folks, we asked for some direction at which, which there's, you know, the board is looking for. And, and then also the neighbors of Laura Lane spoke in reference to us keeping with our agreement with the folks in Laura Lane and keeping under the 20 to 22 lots of what we discussed at the Laura Lane meeting, if you want to call it. And we've come in with just that. We've come in with the six lots. We've, we're under what we've talked about in reference to both the neighbors in Laura Lane, along with meeting the criteria saying under the 25 lot threshold in reference to increasing the road size for that reason. Actually, Richard, I'm, I, that's pretty much the project as a whole. Just an update, we are working with, we have already discussed with the postmaster in reference to mailbox location. And the mailbox, they would like to see the mailbox down by the fire system in that location because they won't do individual mailboxes anymore. They asked us to do basically two independent boxes of which we've already ordered so people can get their mail directly there. And that will be going down by, on the first phase, which is right on the intersection of Old Thompson Trail and the Oak Ridge Terrace Road as you, as it's there today.
Okay.
Thank you.
Yes. Yeah.
Well, I wanted to make sure that the board had, had no, no other questions first.
Just on that mailbox, the current properties already have their own their own blocks, the personal ones is already.
No, Phase 1 has no, no mailboxes whatsoever. The, the town, right now, the folks who are living in there who have got occupancy permits have got post office boxes until the mailboxes come in, unfortunately, due to COVID and everything else, the mailboxes are backordered.
It's not just a new phase, it's the entire.
We're doing it for Phase 1 and Phase 2. So we've ordered, so we ordered enough boxes for 24 mail slots, a FedEx package, you know, drop off as well.
I guess my question is, is where would they be thinking you'd need an easement for that?
That's correct. Correct. And that's, the easement is.
Right.
Right.
How far along are you guys with your DEP process?
Submitted, I think it was back two months ago this point. That's generally been a six-month process that we've seen.
So deemed complete?
Yeah, I think they're still.
No, 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 they've accepted it. Your stormwater, you've got the underground soil filter.
Yeah.
And then how about any NRPA permit associated with that one? With, with your total, you know, roughly your total wetland.
We actually have no wetland fills.
Well, you've got a crossing.
That crossing, we already got that permit on Phase 1.
Oh, okay.
So that was done in Phase 1, James. And if you see, there's a large COVID. And when we did Phase 1 originally, we got that DEP permit because we were using that back section as a staging area to keep the product away from Phase 1 as we were constructing it.
That's all been taken care of.
Yes, it has.
Okay.
So it's the, what, what DEP is looked at is basically stormwater retention.
Right.
Stormwater quality and so on. We did, we, we did submit the DEP probably six to seven months ago when we were, when we were coming to you with an 11 lot Phase 2, but because we changed it down to six, it's reduced the impact of what we're doing here. So they, they just want, so they just took what our old application was and they're just reviewing it again based on what we've submitted.
Okay. Yes.
So Walter, the culverts, there are three culverts that are vested in the letter. So two of them need to be brought up to standard. Is that right? You have two that are 12 inches, but they should be 15 inches.
No, I didn't hear anything on that, Susan.
According to a comment from the Public Works Director.
Have you seen that?
No, I didn't, I didn't see that at all.
Are those existing culverts or ones that?
Apparently, there are three existing culverts, one of which is in compliance and the other two are not.
Right.
When was that letter from Roger, I'm surprised?
I'll find out for you in one second.
A little bit longer later or longer?
Yeah.
There were, there were two culverts that were different places. Laura Lane has stated on the criteria, Susan, so I'm not sure of any other.
Just mentioning what I read this afternoon in the letter, so.
This is for Phase 2. Yeah, these are the culverts for Phase 2. They need to be increased from 12 to 15. Yes. So we, we were in.
One of those out Walter on the map so we can see where they are.
So the culverts, there's one right here. So this is the back of Lot 12 of Phase 1. And that culvert has a cross right there to this, alongside the large 36-inch culvert that we already have in place.
Right.
Alongside that. So they, he wants to increase that to 15 inches. Yeah. Which is not a problem.
All right, we're making that change.
Oh, not a problem. Yeah. Not a problem at all. And then, so the others, so those two just need to be. And all, and all our, all our culverts and all Phase 1 were all 15 or larger.
So those other two that were smaller, they were older? Is that it? That they were there previously or?
No, no, he, he must have just reviewed this plan when you said, when we submit the application and just said that the, the new ones we're proposing, he wants to change to 15. That's correct. That's correct.
There was another item was pointed out was Lot 20. Driveway that must be coming from Laura Lane.
Yes. So the Turgeon's home, the Turgeon's home is right here. The Turgeon's home is right here. And this is the lot, the lot that's will access right here.
Right to the cul-de-sac? Just, just short of the cul-de-sac.
Too much impact on the existing.
Excuse me?
Don't want to have too much impact on, on the existing home, Turgeon's, if possible.
Yeah, their home.
Their home is actually, their home is roughly about this area.
Okay.
Right here because they have a long driveway off the cul-de-sac.
Right.
And then, and then this driveway will access, you know, right here.
Right.
Walter, do you mind?
Sorry.
Culverts and they were sitting behind your side.
Sure. So this is Lot 20 right here. The Turgeon's home is roughly right about here. Okay. They've got that long driveway off the cul-de-sac and the driveway access will be right here. Your home is here. Right, your home is here. So we're, we're right here coming out of the driveway access right there.
Yes.
So Walter, quick question. So was there any issue about having a driveway exit on the Laura Lane and not actually come out on one of the new roads that you're creating or defending community? I mean, is it, did you have to get, did you speak to Roger, Public Works, or is it within your permit? Because I don't remember.
It's within, it's within my right as the landowner of Laura Lane to access, you know, that area. I own Laura Lane. And the, the reason why we did this is because there's less impact on clearing trees because this lot is way over here. We have to come from, bring a driveway all the way through to that, which doesn't make sense.
Would the lot be moved? To Old Thompson Trail?
Again, you're talking more impact, the further you go of the road, this road is already existing. That's.
Correct, it's already there.
Least impact you could ask for.
And that's what we did was the least impact for that lot. So as far as, and that's the only lot that we have access in Laura Lane. And again, the ordinance allows me to do that because I do have, I do have right title and interest on that property to access that. There's nothing that says I can't access that in reference to the ordinance that, that we have found, you know, to the town. And again, it's the less impact of this development to do that because then we put it out here, we're impacting this right away because if you remember onsite walk, you, the board specifically asked us to, could we keep a, a right of way on paper to that lot in case something in the future could ever tie in after the fact. That's not something I want to do. That's something you requested me or you asked me to do.
I remember that too.
Yep.
So, well, it does make sense that it's much less impact than putting, making a driveway all the way through. I was just curious whether or not that was blessed as a part of your permit. Can't say for sure, but.
Right, we meet the street fundage is really what.
Goes up to the standards that it needs to be. Those are the dreams of the, the road already exists.
Does the board have any more questions? The applicant?
No.
No? Yes, you can.
So when Mr. Woods was trying to drive over the apartment to have a sign, he came to my home and showed me this, which is the plans before everything was done on the greenery. And this is my room. Pointed out that this is the only access point to Laura Lane and the blue town road right there. So if we sign, wouldn't be a problem because people would be coming this way. We'd never be coming by my house. What an issue. And I was putting a house, and I get it. But I would have signed it. You're saying it's changing. This was good to me. But yeah. So I sign that, after I sign that, people will be back. So the ordinance, I, if you want to get some, what he said would happen. So now I'm in my house. My driveway is here, that house would be here, the driveway would be dividing my driveway. Thank you.
Would you say that in writing, when you sign that, that?
I didn't know.
I'm just letting you know.
Yeah.
This is not legal. This is legal. This is right. I'm putting it out on the record. But if I was told before I signed that, that this entrance and I had this, my house would be would be the only entrance to Laura Lane, except for the Ford House. So my house is here, a piece of clothing here, and the property line is.
He could have access to Laurel Lane. Financial decision if you want to badly enough. Okay. Okay.
No, that doesn't because we we have an agreement that I'm I'm part of it and I pay my equal share and so don't the folks on Oak Ridge Terrace that we've all signed and agreed upon until town accepted road. And that and that document is actually recorded.
That's that's a question for a lawyer. I'm not touching that one.
And and we did actually have both lawyers put that together, review that uh prior to this because I wasn't going to spend four hundred, three hundred, three hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars building Laurel Lane without having that. You know, in my in my hand.
The road uh maintenance area that you had.
That's correct. And that's what it is.
And at this point, I that would be binding because even if Mr. Woods owns the entire strip of land, it's not a public road.
And the same with Oak Ridge Terrace, the folks that are in there are also part of the association now. So those folks will be paying into uh the plowing and so will their share until hopefully that the town would be then accepted, you know, the town road would be accepted by the town. And that's the goal, but you know, it's it's town vote. And that was disclosed to all, to everybody. And that's also disclosed to the folks that I sold to. It's in their deed.
Anybody else have any comments, questions? Anything for the applicant? Well, I want to make sure that anybody has questions they can get them answered now.
I mean, the only thing that I would I would suggest to Mr. Woods is to have the engineer respond, you know, with in detail on the road. Uh the road issues with how wide, you know, what what uh how many can go into a a public road, you know, that type of thing.
We'll put it on the note. We're gonna put it on this plan.
We'll just put a memo together for for us to be able to review, you know, any number of things so that we can we can vary succinctly and easily. Review that, see those things and make a decision.
Sure.
Paul, do you have a question?
I mean, and I say that. And Rich, correct me if I'm wrong, but his intent to make it a public or keep it private really is independent of our decision. We're making a decision on a road and it's nice to know whether it's going to be eventually offered for public acceptance. Or whether it's going to be private, but ultimately that's a little beyond our scope.
Well, it 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 is, but it isn't because if you remember, we have plans that we have approved before where we have wording on the plan that says this will never be a town road.
Correct.
But in this.
We don't have that on this one. We don't have that on this one, Richard.
I'm not saying we do.
Because he comes in front of us and says, we want it to be a town road. We approved the plan, doesn't mean it's going to be a town road.
Oh, that's true.
Right.
That's correct. We've we've seen town meeting accept roads that weren't up to town standards.
Right.
Well, we met the criteria. We've met the criteria.
Good.
Which would be a big expense, so that's way down the road than what you.
No.
No, um that's why we paved down, we base paved the road out last October. So we met the letter of the ordinance because we have to have the base paving down prior to November for the purpose of a full year that the public works can see the conditions of the road and how the road held up. Then I have to finish pave it uh by this November. And I have, we have to then wait another year for then for the town to bring it to town vote that following November. So we will not, so it's a two-year process that this town requires for that purpose uh to make sure that the road is constructed. And that's another reason why we we paid the engineers to review um every facet of the job to make sure that we built it to town specs and town standards for that reason.
Paul, you had a question? No, I think that's.
I'm I'm all set. I'm all done.
And you have a question on that. So once that becomes a town road, you know, if it gets older, you know, long, long.
That's correct.
Anybody get that?
Yep. As long as they meet the requirements.
That's correct. Backside of Reni's property?
On the backside.
Yep. Drainage? There's really uh.
Yeah, that's the back lot right there. So, oh, oh, it's coming this way. This is the high point. Yeah, so this is the, yeah, we're feeding everything into here. Yep, everything is, that's what this picks up. Yeah, we give it attention. We give it a bit of attention over here. And that's what these two areas are picking up this water that comes out of these areas because everything totals.
Where's your, where's your question? So you you about liberty acres? So you're about liberty.
Okay. Dan, you had another comment? Nope, you're good? All you're all done? Anybody in the audience, questions, comments? Okay, we have one here on the board.
So I'm just looking at the open space ratio. I don't know if um you've recalculated this as only phase two that we're looking at as far as open space.
We recalculated both phase one and two together to make sure it meets the criteria of the open space requirement.
Okay, good.
Yeah, that's all, that's been taken.
What was all put aside, the front portion, all mostly wetland, then in the back added up?
Correct.
Okay.
Correct.
Okay.
And that all worked out?
Yeah, but they've reduced the number of lots and increased the number of public states.
Okay.
By keeping it under twenty-five.
Correct.
About phase one, I'm going into phase two because I want to. I know that there's a construction company on, I think it's lot five. The new one that's happening right off this corner. There's no trees, we either one of those properties, I know they have to take it down probably from this side. That's going to be looking forward or bump between, there is absolutely not going to be between the new one and the eleven.
Between which ones?
The new construction company just put in the foundation.
Lot five?
Yep, and the one beside this.
Yeah, yeah, there's, there was no trees to begin with. That was, that was where that, it was a really steep slope.
Okay, yeah.
But I, we did fill that in and as I told you, and we actually, when we did the sidewalk, I have um seven, eight street trees in the back planted in the uh a lot on the face two in that staging here that we talked about. And that those trees will be going in in those areas to fill that area in because the lot, that last requirement that TAD had is we had to have street trees every certain distance apart. And those street trees are still on site, but they're planted in the back and we'll be replanting those in the front uh of of lot five as well for that reason.
Okay.
Could that be added to the plan where those trees are going to be going?
I'd be, I um I have no problem putting that in there, sure. Basically like planted trees down the right side. Uh I couldn't plant it on on lot um.
You can stay lot five and lot eleven. Lot eleven is one back here.
No, lot eleven. Lot five is this one right here. It's supposed to stay here. And and that was where there was a very steep slope.
Yeah.
So there was no trees on that. There was only probably four trees on that lot.
Yeah.
Um at all. So what we're going to be doing is just putting street trees in front and we're going to have, we have it like an evergreen. We're just going to do a central evergreen with a brock and a few areas like that for for the folks to have in the front of that.
Yep, that was the house.
And that's, and those trees are on site. So when you see the sidewalk, I'll show you, those trees are still, they're sitting there waiting to be planted in there, but I'm not going to plant them till fall.
Yeah.
Yeah, I have them there.
That's the house that I thought you were going to have the garage on the second floor.
Exactly. And I told you it was going to be, I told you it was going to be a drive under, which it is. So we're using the, obviously the foundation wall as retainage. And then grading that from there.
Okay, thank you.
Point of clarification, that's lot five and lot six that we're the.
That's lot five, that's lot five.
Yes, lot five and lot six, not eleven, not eleven.
That's correct.
Six and five is eleven.
Yeah.
Okay. Lee J, you comment?
Yes, two, a couple of things. Um before, before you leave this agenda item. The plans are going to be updated. I think one of the things that um was discussed tonight was regarding the access on lot twenty. Um I would actually show where your driveway is going to be located.
Yes.
Just so that it's clear to everyone.
I agree.
Where that will be.
I agree.
Um also, I don't know what the board's intention is, but there has been no action to find this application complete. So I don't want anybody leaving here tonight if they don't do that.
Correct.
Thinking that the preliminary plan has been found complete just because they set a sidewalk.
Yeah, and that's what, that's what I'd be asking the board to find that complete, this package to this evening.
That's it.
Do you have any concerns of it being complete?
I do not. I do not. Um I always look at applications from the standpoint of did they submit information on the checklist unless it's a requested waiver? If they have, just because it's there doesn't mean you're satisfied with it, but it does make the application complete. And then you can debate, discuss and ask for additional information from the applicant. So I draw a fine line there, but if they've submitted the information from the checklist, then it will be, it will be complete. Um well, they're going to have to, they're going to have to put that on their revised plan. Yes, yes.
But there's no, there's no ordinance that that's that specifically asks the developer to locate mailboxes. There's no ordinance in the town that I that I can find, my engineers can find. We're putting it in there because it needs to be there because the postal service will not deliver mail to my customers.
Right, we came across that issue uh on a, on a prior development where we were told that the post office said that they would deliver to twenty-five different homes in a subdivision, but the postal ordinance says, uh no, I don't think so. You need to have what they call a gang box.
Gang box, that's correct.
I would also, if you can, add a detail of what your gang box is going to look like so that, you know.
Hopefully be in the ground. Yeah, I've already ordered everything itself. It's, yeah, it's, yeah, I haven't, I haven't cut you that, not a problem.
Stick it on the plan.
Not a problem. And we could, so why don't we just, we'll note it on the plan too. We'll put it right in the location it's going to be because it's going to be within the easement that's already been there and that it's in place.
That's exactly where I would hoped it would have been.
Yeah, yeah. It works perfect. It's a good location for it.
Yeah.
So Walter, I don't see it right now and I've responded to the information this afternoon. And it may have been for Holy Donuts, but you didn't have any waivers.
That's correct. I don't have any waivers.
Yeah, there's.
No waivers, no wetland fills.
There's nothing.
Right.
There's just.
It must have been Holy Donut.
There were a couple of items that said uh not applicable, but the rest of it is. There was nothing on it.
You've been thinking Holy Donuts is what you're thinking. Everybody back there was saying that.
Any, any other comments, questions? Okay, then, are, is the application complete?
Are we, are we going to have that conversation?
Let's have the conversation.
So um first one, the first one you mentioned is not applicable. All parts of the land dedicated to public use and conditions of such dedication, you're retaining all of the open space?
Uh no, I'm I'm retaining, uh we have open space allocated for phase one, phase two, and I'm retaining the remaining land of that, which is, which is right here. So I've got all the opens up retained in this area right here. Land retained.
Yeah, right. You're not, you're not then deeding that land retained.
That's correct.
Any of the open space to a third party.
That's correct.
You're not.
I'm not.
Okay.
That's, that's, that area retained is retained by Walter Woods.
Right, that's, that was what I was assuming.
Yes. Correct.
Yep, so, so to me, if he's not deeding that to anybody, that's.
Yeah.
Right now, it's not deeding.
But if I, if that happens, I I believe I'd have to come back to the board for that purpose anyways. Because the board would require that based on the footnotes that are typically in the plan.
So at the current time.
Yeah, I mean, I I assume through your DEP uh application, you've reached out to IF&amp;W?
Oh, yeah.
To make sure that they didn't have any areas right there.
Yes.
Yep.
Yep, we've already done that. That was done. That was done phase one, but that was also, that was also done on the second submission seven months ago because they already did that review. They're just kind of doing amended review because we scaled the system down.
You had noticed in the plan, you have like a nitrate plant?
Yes.
Is that right?
Yes. Yep, we did a nitrate survey, we had.
Yep, all right.
Yep. 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 Correct. And all test, testment locations as well.
Motion's been made and seconded to deem the application complete. Any discussion? Hearing none. Those in favor? It is unanimous.
We'll see your two rules.
Thank you very much. Appreciate your time this evening.
That'll be Tony's next nomination. We'll take job. Tell Tony he he doesn't work hard enough. We know Tony. Thank you all.
Okay, uh conditioned use permit, item number two, The Holy Donut, map thirty-six, lot seventeen. Application for change of use to the existing structures on the site to create a drive-through, storage, office and production space. The Holy Donut Incorporated is the applicant. Seesalt Holding Company LLC is the landowner. Sam LaBelle, P E of Acorn Engineering Incorporated is the authorized agent for the applicant. Mr. LaBelle.
Good evening. So I'm actually going to let Jeff, the CEO of Holy Donut, open, open things up here. Evening. Uh thanks for having us and uh just wanted to start off by first telling a little bit about our company. Um we are a locally owned, family owned company currently with uh four locations, two in the Portland area, one in Scarborough and one in Auburn, Maine. A company that started very humbly out of my sister-in-law's kitchen. And we've spent the last, I guess almost nine years scaling the company. Um and we look forward to certainly being here in the Rundle market and uh chose this location primarily for uh the production facility, uh the restaurant space. And I guess the property was enhanced by the opportunity for some ancillary retail to help offset the debt load on the property as well. Be more excited to be stepping into York County and we look forward to being a productive member for the community.
Exciting to have you there.
Yeah, thanks, Jeff. And so I guess I'm just going to do a quick overview of the site, um the site plan. So it's great, great to be in front of you. Um as Rich said, my name is Sam LaBelle with Acorn Engineering. Um and yeah, we've been working on this one for for quite a few months now. Um had the opportunity to sit down with Lee J and Jim, um take some of their preliminary comments. Uh we submitted um in July. And so, yeah, we're really, really excited to be in front of you with this one. We're, we're confident in the plan and look forward to some of your feedback tonight. Um just looking at the existing conditions briefly, of course, Portland Road, Route One, running to the west. You know, while this, while this site is kind of technically vacant right now, the Holy Donut acquires it. The most recent usage. Up front, seafood restaurant. The ice cream parlor and the store to the rear, obviously a decent amount of um pavement and parking. Being the real one corridor, a pretty good amount of commercial use surrounding the site. And so jumping into the proposed conditions, we, we've really focused on um certain areas to, to enhance. Work with the existing conditions, recognizing this is a redevelopment project um with the approach of how can we, you know, make this a safe and functional process for the drive-through, which is really what's triggering the planning board, um and also make it a little bit more attractive at the same time. Uh so working from Route One in, we are looking to utilize the existing driveway curb cut, the, you know, physically that width would not change. We are looking to uh get a stop sign and bar in there, um some new striping, one-way in. Um two lanes left and right out. You can see we've also extended this raised landscape island closer to the driveway. And this will really force incoming customers to to really bear right, make sure they understand where they need to go uh to get to the destination, which of course is the donut shop. Um you know, this will be signed with one-way traffic. So to make it clear and, you know, hopefully there will be repeat customers who will come from there with sight as, as they come back for, for more business. We've also pulled this front yard buffer about fifteen feet. We're, we're moving about fifteen feet of pavement and replacing that with vegetation. Obviously, this is going to make, you know, it's going to give the site more curb appeal. But it's also going to lower, you know, it's going to decrease this width such that it can still accommodate emergency vehicles. But it doesn't, um you know, allow people to kind of feel like they're in a maze of pavement. Um and really trying to direct people to this circulation um to the drive-through. And so, you know, we, we, there was an intentional decision made to make this the drive-through as it's at the back of the site. Um and, you know, so during peak hours, you really can get vehicles into the site off of Route One. Um and so just within this horseshoe shape, we've met that eight-car queue length, which is what the ordinance requires. And then, you know, talking with Lee J, thought it might be a good idea to also kind of show what that overflow condition might look like if there is more than eight. Um and so we came up with about twenty vehicles that you could actually house on-site um out of the public driveway. So this building um is the drive-through. There'd also be a small outdoor space with some tables and a walk-up counter. Um although the majority of the business is expected to be the drive-through. Once customers get their, get their food, they'd have a straightaway exit all the way to Route One, making it once again very clear um where they need to go to leave the site. Um and uh right now, the DOT is reviewing this because it's a change of use technically, which, which this application um is as well. The DOT will be reviewing um these movements out of here, which, which we feel comfortable with the sight lines um as well as the generation. I also to note, um we are looking at a loading area for deliveries of raw material. And overall, you know, really trying to separate pedestrians and vehicles with fencing, striping, um and signage. Uh so that was something we paid attention to. Uh from a traffic perspective, Sabego Technics did generate um a report. And um they came up with including employees and customers in the peak hour. We were in the low nineties um which includes entering and exiting during that peak morning hour. Um so, so definitely below that hundred threshold with a DOT permit is required. If you look at the daily traffic, not just the peak hour, we don't expect, um you know, a significant increase if you, if you took into account the sea, the seafood restaurant and the ice cream parlor. Um you know, the overall daily traffic over twenty-four hours, uh we don't expect it to be significantly different. From the utility perspective, you know, these are similar uses and um you know, the existing infrastructure we anticipate to be sufficient uh for Holy Donut's needs. I guess the last two things I'll touch on is stormwater and parking. Stormwater, we aren't proposing to train, change any of the drainage patterns. I mean, overall that, you know, in the grand scheme of things, this is minimal site work. Um a benefit of the project is because we're removing building, we're calling building four, it's a kind of a poor-conditioned um storage building. Because we're removing this building and pulling vegetation up, we're actually reducing the overall impervious area. So from a stormwater perspective, um we will see, um you know, benefit to the quality and the quantity of stormwater. Um and as far as parking goes, uh the existing site had around seventy parking spaces. And you know, in the proposed condition, we're down to around forty-seven. And so when you compare that to the land use ordinance, um we still technically are slightly overparked. However, you know, with the prescribed land uses in those off-street parking tables, there's no, you know, the, there's no perfect mash, there's no donut shop. And um you know, so we are slightly overparked, but we're reducing uh the parking overall and we're trying to maintain a little bit of flexibility going forward. Um as, as Holy Donut learns, learns their business in this new market. So I think that, that really summarizes kind of the work today, the site plan. Um and yeah, I was just really excited to kind of get, bring the site uh back to life and um get up and running. So thanks, uh thanks for hearing us and look forward to the thoughts.
Can you talk about what you're going to be doing with the other buildings up front?
Uh yes, this building up front here is going to be office space up top and then some storage uh up top and then as well in the basement. Um and it'll be for our, our programs manager who lives in the Bitterford Market, uh as well as our commissary manager. His office will be there. Uh so really is a room here in this space and this will be.
I have a quick question. So you said that the building here on the, the larger building here, that is for deliveries. But are your, I only see one entrance and one exit. So are your delivery trucks going to be competing with the people who are in line for donuts or do you have room for another place for your deliveries?
Well, we, um with our vendors that that we have deliver, um the requirement there is they're either delivering prior to or after peak hour. So they're not interfering. And that's the way we do that in our other shops as well.
And do you have room to have another entrance and exit for deliveries, our delivery entrance? As opposed to one that competes with your retail operation?
I guess.
Pretty wide, the long strip that's along Portland Road.
It is, but I I don't really see the, the necessity for that. For instance, our Scarborough store, all that is done through one entrance as well. Um and that store would be significantly higher traffic than we anticipate this one to be in. To our point, all deliveries come in prior to six AM or after four PM. During our slow period, before six AM would be prior to our opening.
And what time do you open?
Uh this is right now, every market's a little different for us, but we're proposing for this area is six AM to four PM.
And are you using town water?
Uh we are using town water, but the property is separate from the system.
Right, because there's a, the water right there, is that right?
I have a question. Um production in your production area, how many employees will you have in there in regard to like the picking up parking and doing things like that?
Um total employees for the site right now is at twenty-two employees. That's for both, all three buildings combined.
Okay, thank you.
So to Susan's point, Doug, on that, where do you expect the deliveries to occur into the production facility?
I would expect the deliveries to happen here.
So you won't have, you won't have a loading dock or anything?
Uh we wouldn't have any for that. Our deliveries are our primary vendor, uh food to Cisco, uh they have a litigate that. And our delivery vehicles are our vans. Uh and so we don't have block trucks or things like that.
So you, so you guys essentially are going to be production here and then.
Yes, well, I guess we're getting to. Yes, our, our strategy here, um currently our Scarborough location is a both a commissary and a retail outlet for us. And we're really capacity district. Um and so the idea behind this, it will certainly be that we will make all of our dough, all of our delays, all of our free product. And roughly thirty to forty percent of each store's finished product to help reduce the labor at our individual stores, but also be able to deliver that cut product, um which we currently deliver bins of dough and these are all hand-woven and hand-cut. And it's a challenging moment to scale. So this is for us, the ability to apply mechanization to our manufacturing process. And help reduce the labor.
and help reduce the labor burden at the stores. This will also help, currently, our Scarborough location has no dining room. We've got to commandeer that production space. During the pandemic, we stepped into Hannaford's, kind of all the people. And so, we're anxious to give our dining room back to our staff.
Very exciting to have you here, I think.
We couldn't be more excited. I know people have been clamoring for us to enter North County for some time. So, this is our opportunity to do so and I think other opportunities in other towns in North County. Changing the building's look. The don't follow, if you're familiar with our brand, it'll be similar color scheme to our locations, a combination of gray and teal. This one was almost close enough, that's what I'm checking.
No.
It doesn't quite fit it. So, that would be primarily teal with gray accents. As all the buildings will be a combination of teal and gray, these will be primarily gray with teal accents.
Do you have any renderings to do with what the buildings are going to look like once they're kind of upgraded and?
In terms of structurally, there wouldn't be any difference, but I can get you, the painting hasn't, won't start yet, start downstream, but I can sort of get you color scheme if that's important.
Yeah, or some ideation of what you expect these, the entire site to look like once you've had a chance to trash it and get it organized for the purposes.
Yeah, we're excited to, to dress it up a bit, obviously, it's retired, it needs a little bit of help. But as, you know, we do with all of our locations, you know, curb appeal and keeping a clean, simple presence to the property for us.
We'd love to see how it's going to look, if you have anything to add over to this.
What about signage?
Um, signage, right now, we are looking to have a sign on the front of the building here. Our logo sign somewhere to this would be positioned here. And then, a small logo sign on the eaves of this building.
Sign with?
Uh, these signs will not, this sign here, we intend, the current sign, I believe, is in about this area here. It's pretty dilapidated, I'm not sure we could resurrect that. And so, what we've done in, I guess, our Scarborough store, that's in, our Auburn store, has a lollipop sign, just one standard sign with a circular logo on it as well.
And doesn't have lights or?
Uh, it would be interior, that would be our preference.
So, your anticipation with, again, with delivery trucks is that they would come in and then circle somewhere between the office building and the retail building?
We anticipate them to come down through here and come around this way.
And then to leave, go back sort of to the east of the office building and back out?
Yes, that it would come here and then here and out, yeah.
What would be the capacity, seating capacity that you're planning on inside?
Uh, there would be no seating, it would all, it would just be walk up here. This is a relatively small building, it's only 1,000 square feet. So, it would just really be walk up here and then drive.
So, you would never have an need for too many vehicles out front there?
No, as we, as Sam mentioned, we would, you know, anticipate having a few seats out here during, you know, months. But in winter time, it would really just. And as I mentioned earlier, this is really about this building here for us. And being able to remove production from our Scarborough store and allow for us to add additional units in Southern Maine. This was really a bonus for us. It allows for us, you know, we're forecasting that to be our lowest grossing store that we have, but would still allow for it to provide some cash flow to support our.
Well, hopefully we'll surprise you.
Yeah.
I love good surprises.
You love it too.
Once a day.
I do have a question. Yes, Dan.
Do you just have a quick question? You might have already said it, but the production, is that just for this place? Or is there going to be production for your other stuff?
It will be production for this site as well as our. Uh, it would be raw material production, I need dough. A portion of the finished products. Production of this permit in this.
So, I do have a question for you. One, on your, on your waivers. You've asked, you, you, you said it does not apply. Item number 10, written copies of all required state and federal approvals. But you've already told us that MDOT is looking at the driveway. But you're saying that it's, doesn't apply that we would have a copy of that written permit?
Yep, so I, so I, I believe when we said that did not apply, that was prior to us understanding that we would need, that this would qualify as a change of use with the DOT. So, so when we do resubmit the final in the coming weeks, we will, we'll clarify that. And hopefully be able to, yeah, and hopefully be able to document DOT's acceptance, approval.
So, what's the timeline on, on that?
That's a good question. These days with, with DEP and DOT, it really does vary.
Can, can you give us a copy of the submission? Because we've, we've been known to, I, I, I don't, the word's not temporary, but we conditionally approve the application.
Sure.
So that you, you can proceed forward, assuming that MDOT comes along and says, yeah, okay.
Right, yeah. I do know they were, they're planning on doing their site visit this week to check sightlines essentially. So, I anticipate, you know, if they had any issue, we can hear about it.
So, you need, you need to find somebody that went to the Seafood Center back in its heyday.
Yeah.
You know, and, and would remember it. And so that they, yeah, there's, there's plenty of sightline here.
Yeah.
Is it, is it only, is it a traffic movement permit through the DOT or just a driveway entrance permit?
It's just a driveway entrance permit because.
That's typically a pretty short permit.
Yeah, yeah. Just purely because we're not in, technically in an urban area under the DOT's region. So, because of the change of use that triggered that application.
Okay. Make a motion.
I approve that we schedule a sidewalk.
When?
The 17th is pretty jammed up. I think that's going to be a long sidewalk, so maybe we need two weeks.
Would be like four weeks and that?
We, we could do that in four weeks, or we could do it in, in five weeks when, before the next meeting.
Okay, next meeting, five weeks.
Well, the next meeting is the 17th, and after that, it's three weeks before the next meeting.
Is that pushing up too long for you guys?
Sooner is better for us.
Okay, do it.
I don't believe Jamie needs a certain amount of time.
Either that or do it.
I don't foresee this being a long sidewalk.
No, I don't think so.
I think.
Want to say posting that's set the following Tuesday or another day of the week at 5:30 or so.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I agree.
So, pick a day.
How much notice do you need, Lee J.?
Uh, posting needs to be seven days.
I'm thinking it'd be, really, it's, it's a more of a formality than anything because it's, you're not really changing too much pavement, you're not adding the pavement or.
We're going to give a slight amount of pavement to the drive-through here. This, where the pavement ends here, we just need to add this semicircle right here. But to Sam's point, we're not adding impervious surface with removal of this.
Choose to hit or pay another brand new one, uh, application. I think it's really.
What about it?
Well, I sort of didn't know if that would give them enough time. We said, we said he'd need one seven days.
He needs seven days, so.
So, next Tuesday with the. So, I would, I would say.
I was going to say.
I will make a motion.
Okay.
And this is solely because it will suit my schedule. Is we do it on Monday, the 16th at 5:30.
That, that fits my schedule, I'm out of town all next week.
I want to.
Okay. So, we have a motion and a second for Monday, the 16th at, what'd you say, 5:30?
Yeah.
At 5:30. Will that work for you guys? Any, any discussion? 5:30, 5:30. Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstaining? Okay, one abstention, five in favor. We'll look for, we'll see you on the 16th.
Perfect.
Yeah.
Any other questions?
Does the board have any other questions? Does anybody in the audience have a question?
Lee J., any comments?
I would take it you're, you're not making a motion to find the application complete with the waivers as requested at this time.
Correct.
Just want to make sure again so that everybody's on the same page with that.
Okay.
Yep.
Superboard, can we put this on the next?
We can, we can put this on the agenda for the 17th, and we can discuss the sidewalk. And if you've got some other stuff that we were asking about, we can deem it complete and proceed forward.
Lee J., any, any comments or anything from you?
Uh, nope. Uh, I did prepare something, you should have it in your packet. It's a short memo, it talks about the waivers. And just a bullet list of issues to look at and consider, which you all have done on your own, very good. Sam, Sam and I and Jim Nagel did have an opportunity to meet prior to you folks getting this. And, and, you know, they worked with us very well to get the plans redesigned, if you will, to address some of our concerns and issues. So, I mean, I think they're in great shape. Um, I'm going to leave that to the chairman, but I think, I think we will. We need to still discuss setting that agenda, but. We're, we're probably overloaded at this point, I don't believe so. We should be able to get it back on the 17th.
Yeah, we should be able to do that.
Yeah.
Too many surprises. I would look forward to seeing you there.
I would, I would point out to the rest of the board, you have a couple of sheets of paper in your application that do not belong in here. They go to, they go to a different.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think it, it got confused in with.
Oh, yeah, another application.
Yep.
Yeah, as you can see, there was quite a bit of paperwork that Anne did an excellent job at putting together for everybody. So, I think she probably got a little frazzled in there while she was doing it with everything.
Yeah, she, she can get a little overwhelmed.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, we, yes, Dan. He just wants donuts.
Our first part of the mission, we're going to open, uh, as soon as possible, this is our, our plan. We're ready to go, all right? Just to make sure that we have the appropriate approvals. We'd like to get started on certainly the paving and everything else on the property. But in terms of opening the retail, we're looking at probably late Q1. The retail. For the first part of the.
Well, yeah, late, late first quarter works because the snow will be gone by then.
Right.
Well, waivers are a challenge at this point, so, yeah. Everything's taking longer. So, we're just getting done opening our, our second location in Portland. Hopefully, it'll be open on Saturday, so we need to get that done first.
Where in Portland?
Uh, the former Bill's Pizza, we were on Exchange Street.
Okay.
And, uh, and then I really did a number on that application. Opportunity to step back into the old Portland, uh, pandemic cleaning. We took advantage of that to go to the former Bill's Pizza. Perfect world we would have been open a month ago, but it's looking like maybe Friday or Sunday.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your time. Sorry?
On our way to Willarddale, we usually hit the sky hole.
So, you're going to get us the DOT, uh, the letter of admission.
Right, just the, the copy of the submission.
Yeah, I can send that aside, on a sec, I could forward along.
And if you have any renderings or ideation of what you expect site to be hard.
I don't have those at this time, but as soon as I'm able to provide those, you know, get that done, I'll make it certain.
Okay, great. That takes care of that. Mr. Plana, do you have anything for us?
Just a quick reminder again, Susan took advantage of the MMA conference or, or Planning 101 presentation discussion about processes and procedures. And that's still available to you folks, as well as I understand, with another episode of that coming up soon. So, don't hesitate to take advantage of it if you want to. I have been talking with our attorney about possibly doing something later in the fall, which would be similar to theirs, since we haven't done a live presentation of that sort in a while. But we haven't set any dates or anything. It will be, would be close to here. In another community, I think they have a really good situation, so we'll be pursuing that hopefully. Time permitting, it's very busy in our shop, so we're stretched pretty thin. Other than that, for you folks, things I think are going well. Again, Jim and I have really hit the same note on a lot of things, and we're working very well together on a number of issues. A lot of stuff that you folks won't even see because they're more code-related stuff. But I think things are, things are smoothing, smoothing themselves out since it's a different situation than you previously had. And everybody is working great together, so.
MMA conference, you're talking about training going on in December?
Yes.
All right. Yeah, we are registered to that, right?
Um, I don't know if you, if you.
We should, we should be. You and I should both be set up with it.
You should be, yes.
Okay.
Yeah. Again, um, as part of that, I, I can't emphasize enough. I mean, Anne has just done the Omen's job. She's taken over a lot of responsibility, and she's been a great help to me. And she's, I think, she really, she really understands this process, and she's jumped right in and, and she's doing a lot of the work that, that you folks don't see that, helping me prepare for this, these meetings, so.
Well, it seems to be going pretty smoothly.
I think so, I think so.
We expressed that at the selectment at the last meeting that.
The, um, the communication's a good. Jim and, and Anne especially know how to get ahold of me when I'm not around. And I take, I, I, I kind of joke about it, but I'm, I'm taking a lot of calls from the public and emails. They're sending them to me, that's what they're supposed to do. And for me right now, it's all a rundle all the time, even when I'm not here. So, that's good, people are still getting the service that they need and that they expect, I would assume. So, I think we're, we're again getting up to speed in that respect as well.
Good, thank you for everything.
You're very welcome.
Okay, anything else? I think I'm, I think the, the only other thing that I can think of that we need to finish up, we can probably get at the next meeting, that's the cluster housing. The last couple of pieces that we made the change to, we just have to vote to approve them all.
Yep, I think it's a page and a half total, but I think the changes were minor and only two or three. I might even suggest that if you have an opportunity to review the stuff on your own, maybe go through Richard and let him know if you have any issues or concerns. We might be able to just wrap it up that way.
And I just wanted to say, the reason why I kept asking for some kind of rendering and ideation because it's clear that they're using that spot really as more a corporate manufacturing spot, and their intention is really not to use it as a retail spot.
Correct.
For a retail business. And you can tell just by the way they organize their parking lot and where they put their, you know, storage facility for drop-offs and things like that, that I want to see what it's going to look like. Because right now, it's, uh, needs a little TLC. And I personally don't want them to think that they can just slap a little lipstick on the buildings and because it's inexpensive relative. and because it's inexpensive relatively to be here and then we end up.
I don't think very much from all their other sites, that that would be the case. I mean, there was pretty much on all their other locations.
Those are, those are more sleep retail, you know, shops.
No, I agree with you, I'm just saying I don't suspect us from their, their branding as a business state, that they would make something that would be not attractive even in their branded parking lot.
Well, and so usually you do have some kind of rendering or ideation for these kinds of projects. And I wanna make sure that whatever goes in on that road in a rundle is attractive, so.
And the signage is appropriate.
I, and it's all part of the site.
Yes.
We've got, we have every right to inquire about that.
Then that's why I think you thought I was a broken record, but I can ask you.
You're gonna send us something to sign this week, right? I'm sorry, you'll be sending us something to sign this week, right?
Yes, well, yes, we need to make a list, a couple of corrections on it and whatnot. Minor, minor changes that occurred, so, yes.
We'll do that electronically again, a docu-sign or?
Uh, yeah, I will be out tomorrow, I'm not even in my office tomorrow, but Thursday, first thing, that's what I will be working on. And so, yes, Richard should have something.
Yeah, send it to me and I'll send it out, docu-sign to everybody.
Absolutely.
And please, please get it signed right away, so I can get it back out. I will be, I will be out of town, I'm leaving Thursday morning, but I have access to everything. Gotta take a week's vacation and go away. I got a, I got a couple of friends that are having their 50th wedding anniversary, so I gotta, we're driving down to surprise them, they have no idea.
So.
But what, why is your protocol utilizing materials, like keeping them? Like how long do we keep them, do we give back to you, what do we do with your materials?
I don't wanna back. I, I keep. I, hang on, hang on, I.
Hold on to until they're already been approved.
That's right.
After that.
Okay.
You know.
If it's a controversial project, I tend to hold on to it a little longer, just in case there's an appeal or anything else that.
Yeah, I probably keep. I think I keep most of this stuff for about a year, from the, from the point that we're done and then I toss it out.
Every couple of years, I throw it all.
Right.
Does the town have a shredder? Do you have a, a way to shred official documents?
They must, they must have a shredder. They must have one.
Oh, it'd be nice to have, because I'll come in and.
Are you worried about any of this being caught in the transfer station?
No. Somebody might, might be.
I moved that we adjourn, are we done?
I moved that we adjourn on a second day.
We're well done, thank you very much.
Thank you.